Good afternoon, everyone. To those of you attending in person and those of you who are joining us online. Today is June 5th, 2024. My name is Jeff Jones and I am the current president of the Coastal Republican Assembly, and we are the host of this event this afternoon. We are a local chapter of a larger Georgia Republican Assembly. And I'll tell you more about the CRA later after we finish our discussion with our candidate here. This is what we are calling a chat session with candidates who are involved in the Glen County Commission District 2 runoff. Early voting is currently underway and runs through Friday, June 14th, with Election Day being held on Tuesday, June 18th. The CRA wants to strongly encourage everyone to get out and vote. In fact, we suggest in-person early voting because you never know what may happen on Election Day that might keep you from voting. The candidates for the District 2 Commission runoff are Amy Abbott and Bob Duncan. Amy, of course, won the plurality vote in the primary, but did not reach the 50% plus one vote threshold to have a runoff. When the CRA decided to hold this chat session, both candidates were invited to participate. Amy Abbott accepted immediately and is, of course, with us this afternoon. Bob Duncan was invited at the same time and indicated, when he was invited, that he would participate in our chat session but would have to juggle earlier commitments. Unfortunately, by the time Bob Duncan notified us that he could not participate, the wheels were already in motion. The announcements had been sent out and commitments made, so here we are. However, in the interest of fairness, Bob Duncan was offered the opportunity to provide us with a written statement or a video message for us to use today of why he believed he should be elected to the District 2 County Commission seat. Again, and unfortunately, Bob chose not to send that material. Consequently, you, the voter, will need to decide, based on the best available information, who you want to be your next District 2 County Commissioner. So without further delay, we proceed ahead with our chat with candidate Amy Abbott. Introduce yourself.
Amy Abbott. Ever since I was in St. Simon's Island, me and I have been in Georgia now about a decade. We've been in St. Simon's, living here for about five years, but we've been here about every weekend since we moved here. And we just realized during COVID that it was silly to drive down here every weekend. We might as well just move here. And so we were very blessed to find a really nice home on St. Simon's Island, and we've been here ever since. So I'm a wife and a mother. I have two grown sons that both live someplace else, very far away, Kentucky and Washington. They both have degrees and they both have jobs. One's a software engineer, the other one's working with automotive. And I got a cat bagging. And I work still. I'm a teacher. I have a master's degree in mathematics, and I still work online. I work for Johns Hopkins University's City Program, Talented Youth, and I work for Savannah Technical College's GED program. And I work for, oh, University of South Carolina, I've heard, I'm off from them right now. They're done until fall for me. And then I do some tutoring online. And I got involved here with politics over the last couple of years since I've been here. I just seen things, and I'd like to get involved, and it led me to here because I realized somebody needed to step up towards that was willing to stand up for the residents. I've been very disappointed in things that happened and what little voice we have on the Board of Commissioners. I'm hoping to be more vocal about how we feel in a polite manner.
So please explain why and what you think makes, what you believe makes you the better candidate to represent District 2.
I have a lot of skills with people. I've been working with people for a long time, and this job takes a lot of work with people to be able to get out there and talk to them. Dave and I have been out canvassing and talking with people, and they've seen how great I am at talking and coming to an agreement on things. And I've worked a long time about coming to agreement on things as a teacher, with families, in situations that have been very difficult. But I understand about people, and I have a lot of experience with it, with public service. And I don't, yeah, I think that's what makes me a little different, is my public service experience. I really have habits.
County government in general. As the District 2 County Commissioner, you are the St. Simon's, Sea Island, and Jekyll Island, what we locally call the Islands Commissioner. Yet you will be voting on items that will affect the entire county, including the islands. Explain how you will both represent the islands and the mainland to promote new business growth for Glen County, for example, or make infrastructure improvements for the mainland or just the islands.
Well, I definitely want to be there for all of them. I've been there for Glen County, and I spoke on a couple of issues that affected everyone. I spoke on the, they wanted to change the site plan agenda timeline of six months. I spoke about that, that we've already been generous enough with our site timelines. But they have taken that away a little bit somewhat, and they would not have to become before the Board of Commissioners again. And I looked up what the issues were on that, and things change over time. And for them to be able to just come back by, you know, indefinitely and have it renewed without having to come back in front of the Board of Commissioners is just a little bit, it's, we shouldn't be doing that. But anyway, so the question was, what I've been doing for everybody, I just tried to do that for all of Glen County to keep the site timelines. And I also talked on another piece of land over in Glen County that they wanted to make an earth center of landfill. They were doing surface mining, which strip mining, it's actually surface mining, I believe, is a word that goes over all of them, and strip mining is within surface mining, I think. But anyway, I spoke on that, and I was just amazed to learn how much money you can make in making a pond. And they were making this pond right next to some homes. And I was disappointed, and none of the residents showed up to talk on it. But anyway, I was concerned about that for them, and as a Board of Commissioner, I probably would have taken the time to go over and look around at the land and see what was going on. I'm worried about everybody and their rights and their own property ownership, but they already have, and other people taking advantage of it and moving drainage and things for them. But I'm worried about the whole county. I know I've talked to some people that have had some things built, and now their land over in Glen County is not on islands, just like they're having on islands, same issue. They're having flooding issues from the road being raised up. They never had to have flood insurance before, but now they do. They didn't have to have that before Glen County built some road and raised it up.
It is important for citizens to have access to our elected officials and for our elected officials to be responsive to the citizens. What are your plans to listen to and to involve the citizens in Board of Commissioners' decision-making process?
I think I've already been doing it. I've been out canvassing and talking to people, and I definitely plan to continue doing that. If there's a big decision, we need to get together and talk about it as a group, possibly, if they want to. And they can send me an email, and I think people have seen on Facebook and social media, I'm pretty responsive to things. If it's a legitimate question, I'm going to answer it. I'm definitely reachable, and that's my years of public service experience. I, but what's interesting with this technology now, how if everybody wants an answer right now, within 24 hours, I think is reasonable, and I'm going to answer within 24 hours.
Now, we're going to talk a little bit about crime and policing. Local crime seems to be on the increase and is definitely on the minds of many citizens. What are some of your ideas and suggestions on how to support the Glen County Police Department and for combating crime?
This is, that's a nationwide issue, but I'll talk local too about it, but across the whole country, everybody's having trouble finding policemen and filling the whole staff in with crime. I think, you know, unique situation here, being by the beach. I would like to be able to give, well, I would like us to be able to give packages and send it to the police if they're relocating here. And it's an awfully nice place to relocate from the north. And to come on down and maybe a relocation package for a few months. My husband and I got one when we came down here from this company, and we stayed someplace for three months, and they helped us move in. I'd like to do that to recruit the police. Let's just think outside the box, what we can do to entice people to come here and be a police officer for us. What a great place to live as a policeman. I would think it'd be a great place for someone to go if they got older and retiring.
Okay. What are your ideas for creative or new policing tactics, such as increasing neighborhood presence with perhaps bike patrols? We're interested on your thoughts and ideas.
Oh, different unique things for the police. Evner has been doing a really good job. I think I saw one, possibly, you guys tell me if I'm wrong, but he bought some cameras. I think there might be one already posted on the roadway there. But he's buying cameras to look over things, but it's hard to get creative with the fact that we don't even have a full police staff yet. I don't know how to be creative when we don't even have enough people to staff what we need so far. So I'd like to get creative and entice people to come here and steal it from other places. It's such a great place to live.
Have been floated around for years about consolidating the Glen County Police Department and the Glen County Sheriff's Department into a single county law enforcement agency. This idea has come up again. Please explain in detail your thoughts about consolidating Glen County's law enforcement into a single agency with the sheriff in charge. What do you think would be good and what do you think might be bad about this consolidation?
Well, it's a big decision to do something like that, to make some kind of change like that. And I honestly, as a teacher, students back there probably knows what I'm talking about. I don't like it when the public's talking about my job. Yeah, I feel kind of bad for the cops that we're sitting here playing with them politically and what they do, and it's so hard to even recruit them. And we're sitting here talking around their jobs in public that we might make some big changes of it. But overall, the bigger problem here is we haven't really talked about it as a community or had a discussion about what it means to do it, to make such a big decision. They did a study about five years ago. There's no savings in doing it, from what I understand. And they haven't said that there's going to be any savings if we do that. And there's a lot of power that's going to be given to just one person. And I, the separation of powers that we have right now is really nice. But we really need to think about it and talk about it as a community. What are the pros and cons of it?
So what do you think is behind this consolidation conversation?
It's going to save money. When I tell them that it's not going to save any money, they're not very interested in it anymore.
Yes.
Okay, yes. I can't really say their opinions, yet.
Well, no, this is for you, Amy, to express your opinions.
Well, my opinion is that it's a big decision that we all really need to think about before we take in stuff like that.
Thank you. Another topic area, we're going to talk about traffic, infrastructure, and growth. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects on St. Simon's and/or on the mainland? In what areas do you think need improvement and why?
I hear a lot about the sewers, and I sure smell the sewers. They claim it's not the sewer, but I find it hard to believe it's not the sewer. When you're standing there waiting the lights at the corner of Sea Island and Padreca, it sure smells like the sewer to me. And when you're sitting on the traffic and hear its teeter, waiting for the light to turn, wow, you get a, wow. But the sewers are definitely something we need to look into. I think, I think it's embarrassing for the tourism when they're sitting there, the light too, smelling at it. I think that's something, so you said, well, we need to work on the sewers. And my understanding is that the pipes that we have up a lot of places around the island are really old. I forget what they are, but they're so old and they're probably crumbling, from what I understand, and we need a lot of upgrades on it. And then in terms of traffic, the roundabout, we all know that that's just not going anywhere. We all, some people would like it, not that many, that Dave and I met when we canvassed, but a few people would like it, but it's just not happening. They can't get an agreement on how much it's going to cost to need one pole, and there's supposedly six or eight poles that need to move, and it's going to be about $2 million a pole. And they would like Georgia Power to do it for free. Georgia Power would like to be paid, and that makes sense to me. And so they're at impasse on that. And then land, they haven't acquired the land yet, so, and it's just not growing at all. I would like to see that light, I think we'd all like that light to tweak back for us, back to how it used to be set, so we can get through that intersection better in time for different times of the day.
You may recall, those that have been around a while, that the Board of Commissioners tried but failed to make the roundabout project an official SLOST project, but it's not. So right now, this roundabout is strictly a Board of Commission project. There is no legal reason that this project should go forward. So you've kind of explained, so what do you think, what ideas, based upon your, being a St. Simon's resident, and as you look at that issue from your perspective, what kind of alternatives or compromises do you think the Board of Commission should consider versus a roundabout?
Yeah, let's add another lane going, going from Sea Island Road going to the west. Put another lane there and also a turn lane dedicated to turn right and also coming off of Sea Island. If they could cut through over by where Truist is, they could have their own right turn lane going that way. And I'd like the lights coordinated, synchronized with Atlantic and with that intersection and the light synchronized over by Harris Teeter, because I was just seeing it tonight. There was nobody even sitting there with the light to turn, and they had the green light. They were all stuck back behind Atlantic, waiting to come forward. And so the traffic was backed up, probably at least an hour and a half or two. I can't imagine how many lights it took to get through it, but if it wouldn't have been sequenced with the Atlantic light, they could have kept moving. So I would like some sequence lights and a couple more turn lanes.
Dedicated turn lanes, traffic light sequencing, that type of thing. Okay. Challenge, if elected and as the only Islands Commissioner, how would you go about changing the minds of the current Board of Commission who seem intent on going ahead with this roundabout project despite objections of many St. Simon's residents?
Well, you know, there are kinds, the people on the mainland sure don't like it when they spend money on us. They think we take all their money, so I don't understand why we're saying, when we're saying we don't need you, we don't want the money, you keep your money. Why would they be voting for it? Because their constituents don't want to spend the money on us, and we don't want them to spend the money. So I don't understand how that's a fight. Seems like a win-win to me. If we're saying we don't want it, and they're voting to give us more money, I think maybe somebody else should worry about their job.
All right, moving away from traffic and infrastructure, let's talk a little bit about community and quality of life. Short-term rentals, or STRs, on St. Simon's continue to be an item of discussion among many St. Simon's residents. Many believe STRs are disruptive to local neighborhoods. Yet, the property owners who rent out their properties are small business owners whose small businesses provide bed tax revenue as well as sales tax revenue to the county. Please explain your views on STRs and what you would propose to regulate or not regulate STRs.
We're getting back to that cop question. You know, what else can we do? We don't even have enough cops to do what we have. So, but we have some things already that we could do for STRs. I was looking over them again today. One of them was that they're not allowed to have an event with over 15 people. My understanding, there's some house there having weddings every weekend with probably 20 or, so what exactly is going on with the ordinances we have already that enforce them? So I'd like to see that. And what do they do when someone talks about this? You know, people are shaking their head, but they don't want to talk about this one house that's a wedding venue in a neighborhood, a family neighborhood. And why do they keep needing to have their weddings over and over again in a family neighborhood? And anyway, so I'd like what we have to be enforced. I'd like to look into who's enforcing it and what we can do to make it better, what we have right now. And in terms of what more we can do, honestly, I would want to look over what other counties are doing, what's successful, and what, but of course, we aren't going to eliminate all of them. It's a business, and people are making money, they invested in it. And, but other communities have taken, like Tyrese, taken some strong steps on it. It's, it is a problem, and the people in the south end, they're very upset about it. It wasn't a canvas, anything that came up with Dave and I looked on the north end or in the middle of the island, but it was the top of the list on the south side. They're so upset about it. They just don't feel like they have a home anymore. Just everybody around them, they're just surrounded with short-term rentals.
Okay, thank you. Again, talking about St. Simon's Island, what is your stance on incorporating St. Simon's into a city?
Well, it's, it's something that would have, have to have the interest of a state legislature for us, like Hodges or Townsend, they'd have to be on board with it. And I'm not aware of anybody being on board with it right now for us. We have to have someone take it to the Georgia State House for us. So until we have that, it's really a midpoint. We have to have some interest from the state to move forward.
Just a comment, it, it would be what's called local legislation, but generally would require emphasis or impetus from the local community to proceed ahead with that project. And then, you're correct, the state legislatures need to pass the legislation to make it happen.
It's good for you to tell, honestly, you should probably just go into exactly what they're supposed to do, because everybody asks about it, and then they're like, it's like, I didn't know you had to do all that.
Well, so kind of a follow-up question to that, that is required constitutionally, according to the Georgia Constitution, is that a city, to be a city constitutionally, has to provide at least, I think it's a minimum of three city services. So if this were to proceed, if there were local impetus, and if we could get a state legislature to carry, legislator, to carry the legislation, what do you think services the new city should take over? Any thoughts on that?
That would be up to them. We're going to have to talk about it as a group, what we'd want to do. We can do a win-win with Glen County for their schools, if we want to keep using, I'm very familiar with win-wins and shared services. We would have to decide what we wanted to do as a group, what we wanted to keep, what we wanted to do ourselves, what we wanted to do our own police force, our own schools, or, I have all kinds of other things.
Okay, to follow up to that question, and you mentioned some of the studies, I think you did, that have been done about St. Simon's incorporation, but the studies I'm aware of strongly suggest that taxes will increase for the entire county if St. Simon's were to become a city. This is simply because the county will lose some of its current tax revenue, which would then go to the new city. So what is your opinion about the rest of Glen County's citizens having their taxes increased with the creation of a new city of St. Simon's? And as a part of that question, should all county residents be allowed to vote about the creation of a new city on St. Simon's if all county taxes will increase?
What's a rule the government has? I don't think we can make up our own decision on that.
Well, to clarify, if the legislation required a vote by the entire county, that could be included in the legislation. It could be. It's not typically, because a city, when they incorporate, they want just the residents of that city to vote.
Right.
But in our case, it's been shown that the entire county would experience a tax increase. And so the point of the question is taxation without representation, just to make St. Simon's a city. That was the point of the question.
Ah, I like that. That's an interesting one, taxation without representation. Again, we would have to see a state legislature even vote in.
The state of Georgia passed the Georgia Squatter Reform Act, HB 1017, which makes it illegal to be a squatter in Georgia. And I, for one, said, are you kidding? It's not currently illegal, but nonetheless, it wasn't. The new law became effective in April 24th of '24, the date the governor signed it. So by all appearances, the passage of this bill will give added protection for homeowners against squatters, but it is still apparently a lengthy legal process to remove a squatter from a home. So as a county commissioner, what is your opinion of this new law and what should Glen County's response be to perhaps changing county ordinances now that the Squatter Reform Act is in effect?
That's interesting. That whole thing is, yeah. I would have to look into what could we do to try to make it stronger.
Post no trespassing signs is one of the suggestions.
Well, I did do that. I don't know if you guys know this, but unless you have a no trespassing sign in your yard, people are allowed to walk through your yard. And if you ask them to leave your property unless you have a no trespassing sign in your yard, they, anyway, yes, we have one in our yard, thank you.
Do you support citizens and law enforcement's rights to remove squatters from their private residence?
Well, of course.
Next question, kind of similar subject is, explain how you will address, or your ideas for addressing the growing issue of vagrancy and panhandling around the county.
That's, that's a tough one, because it's a tough one across the whole country. It's not just here, but it's everywhere. It's a national issue, and I think on a national level, we're all in the room, old enough to remember they used to have mental hospitals and mental facilities for people. I'm not saying that's all the homeless people, but there's a lot of people that really need some mental help, and we should be able to take them someplace to get some help. If that's a national issue, that's not something you can do here in the county. On a local level, I know Sheriff John doesn't like putting anybody in jail that we have to pay for, you know, take them there if they're loyal or sitting there for their free Starbucks coffee and donuts. He's not going to take them over to jail for that. He doesn't want us to spend our tax dollars to put them up for the night.
So.
They have their rights too, as.
Follow-up to that, would you support the expenditure of county or state tax dollars to provide public housing for vagrants and homeless folks?
I'd rather our money go, I've heard the state of Georgia, some families that have children with disabilities, you know, you worry about those families and those kids, they need someplace when they get older, because their parents aren't going to be there forever. And I guess, from what I understand, the state of Georgia doesn't have any place for those kids. And some families are moving out of state because their kids are getting older and they're trying to make arrangements for them when they're gone. I would support that. There's a lot of things we need to support and pay money on. If we're going to spend money on something, I got some other ideas what I'd like to spend it on.
Okay, so moving off of that issue, we're going to, a couple of questions about property and school taxes. Glen County or the school district wanting to increase our property taxes always seems to be an issue. So a couple of questions about property taxes. So first question is, as more land is taken off the county's tax rolls for green space and conservation easements on St. Simon's by state and local nonprofits, which means as a result, the county loses property tax revenue, how do you think the county should make up that revenue loss?
They, well, there's not a lot of room for a lot of homes on the island anyway, so that's great news to me. That really isn't a concern. There's so much more land over in Glen County that's so beautiful over by the marsh and places to live. I'd like to see more development that way.
Okay. It is, again, it's an IRS tax issue that affects local communities, particularly in Glen County and St. Simon's, with the amount of property that gets removed from the tax rolls here. It's an issue. Next question, should the county require that conservation green space lands that are exempt from county taxes be required to be open for regular public access to qualify for that tax exemption?
Oh, that's an interesting question. I, I would think so, probably. I would have to think about it, but that makes sense. But I wondered why that St. Simon's land, first land up on the one side of the island, was only open a couple days in the week. All right, interesting. Tell me something I didn't know.
Something for you to think about.
Yes, something to think about, that's interesting.
Again, about a local tax issue, Glen County has a law on the books for persons who are age 65 who have a net income of under $40,000, that they do not pay property taxes, school taxes on their property. That's current law. That law is called the Chapman Lane Senior School Tax Exemption. So as I said, it's people with a net income of $40,000 or less pay no property school taxes. This means that a high-income earner making, just for example, $250,000 with, who has many deductions, can get below the $40,000 net income and pay no school property taxes. Some have proposed changing this limit to individuals who make $40,000 or less of gross income or more to target just lower-income citizens to receive this tax break. So it's been suggested that changing this limit would increase the in- So it's been suggested that changing this limit would increase the income to Glen County schools, potentially reducing property taxes for the rest of Glen County taxpayers. Complicated issue, I know, so it's a lot there to digest, but, so what are your thoughts about changing tax laws so that people, in this case seniors, with higher incomes still pay school taxes? It's a complicated issue.
Complicated?
It is.
I'm going to look at that and think about what's going on when I hear an income under $40,000. I'd want to look at that and.
Again, the way that law is written, it says that if your net income, and you can make a million dollars and have deductions, 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 have a lot of income and get down below 40, you don't pay a school tax. So that's what has been suggested. Maybe it should be gross versus net. That's been a suggestion, part of the entities themselves to change their taxing structures. That's all the questions we had, Amy. So Amy, we want to thank you very much for participating in this chat session with us. So thank you very much for being on the hot seat and being the only one being asked questions. And you did very well for us, thank you. A little bit of information about the Coastal Republican Assembly, we call it the CRA, and the Georgia Republican Assembly. So we consider ourselves the conservative voice or the conservative conscience of the Republican Party. All of our members are also members of the Republican Party who are also members of the CRA or GRA. One of the distinctions about our group is that by our bylaws, we can endorse candidates in the primary. And the GOPs around the state cannot endorse candidates in the primary. They have to wait until the candidates are selected to go to the general election. So that's a distinction that, about the RAs. So our goal, really simply stated, is to elect conservative Republicans to public office. That is our goal. So if you are interested in more information about the CRA and our activities, we've got something back there, back there, we've got a QR code. You can find us on our Facebook page, facebook.com/Coastal Republican Assembly. And if you're interested in membership in the RAs, Coastal Georgia Republican, Coastal Republican Assembly or the Georgia Republican Assembly, it's georgiaradotcom. And again, there's a sheet on the back table back there, it's got the QR code that makes it really easy. So I want to mention, we are a nonprofit. We collect a little bit of money from dues and donations, so while you're here this evening, we certainly would welcome a donation, not apart by any means, but certainly would be welcomed. And we've got a jar on the table back there. Upcoming events, we've got a couple of things. Our group regularly is, has a booth at the First Fridays in downtown Brunswick, one coming up this Friday. And if you've not been to downtown Brunswick in the last several months, the First Fridays have gotten very, very busy. And I've got to tell you, editor's lies, after last, after May's First Friday, the city came out and said, we think we're having too many people show up to First Friday. We need to figure out a way to wash the crowd. And many of us are thinking, are you kidding? You're working hard to bring people to downtown for businesses and the other activities and you're talking about reducing the number of people? It makes no sense. But again, this Friday, we have a table right out on the street in a prime location right across from Tipsy and Sways. And what we're focusing on right now by being at First Friday is getting out the vote for Trump, making sure people are registered and getting out the vote for Trump. So in the area of our support for Trump, the CRA is holding a Trump Get Out the Vote and Flag Waving Rally on June 22nd. And we will be at Highway, on Highway 341 in the Windixi Plaza. And we encourage you to please bring your Trump gear and your flags. We've done, we did these flag waving rallies leading up to the 2020 election and we had some huge turnouts. So this will not be the only flag-waving pro-Trump get-out-the-vote event we're going to do. So I encourage you to look at our Facebook page. It's Facebook, Coastal Republican Assembly is our Facebook page. So in closing, please get out and vote this runoff election and in the general election on November 1st, November 5th, excuse me, where we will elect Donald J. Trump as the 47th President of the United States. So thank you all for coming. May God continue to bless America and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.